Call meeting order, all rise for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda, we have two additions, seven L. Approve the BL, Big Stock Lake Association budget request for aquatic weed control for 2018. And in the informational item, city hall rubber roof membrane repair. Is there any other changes to the?
We also have the new hockey agreement along with the school on 7B.
Okay.
Just a little addition on that line.
Oh, okay, 7B, yeah, I see it.
That will be handled as one vote.
You can, or you can, if you want, twice or individually or together when you get there.
Okay, so any other changes? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the July 5th, 2017 regular minutes. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 5th, 2017 regular minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. We are now to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We will now go into reports and presentations, police department monthly reports.
Evening mayor, council, I got June's numbers here for you. Some of the highlights that we have here, 17 alarm calls, which is a little bit higher than usual. A lot of those are come with the storms and thunder and stuff, tends to knock them off. Twenty-five personal assists, twenty-eight business assists. We had 27 assisted our agencies, most of those coming from Stearns County. So most of those are assisting them in warrant arrests in town, so fifteen, most of those are all in town. Forty citizen contacts, a lot of that's happening down at the parks and stuff now, we're going down there at night checking fishermen and seeing what people are doing around the park. June was a big month for felony controlled substance, we had 13 controlled substance arrests, felonies, in June. That's not including another 13 paraphernalia or marijuana tickets that we wrote, so. Twenty-six, overall 26 drug arrests there for the month of June, which is pretty high. Fourteen medicals, we had seven car accidents, most of those are just property damage, no injuries. Nineteen suspicious person calls. Two-hundred-and-forty-three verbal warnings for traffic offenses, eighteen, or, excuse me, eight welfare checks. So total calls for service, 703, with 243 of those being verbal warnings. We're down a little bit from last year, so. And down a little bit from May and from last year, but pretty much on course of where we should be for numbers. Pulled up this year's, or so far, the stats for the K-9 program, so far we got 63 fines on K-9 deployments, with a handful of other deployments where we didn't find nothing and no alerts. So we've been staying busy with that, too. Any questions?
With, with all these drug arrests, is Sonny up for a promotion?
Well, he's earning his dog food this year, that's for sure. We're definitely getting a lot more this year than we have last year at this time.
Did the, did these felony, the controlled substances, were they all part of the same bus, these were separate?
Nope, these are all separate, all separate charges, there might be just a couple people in the same car. So if we get somebody with a fair amount, you know, three or four people in the car, we might charge them all. But they're all separate charges, so. But sometimes we'll get two or three people in one car and they all go to jail. So we're happy to bring them all to jail if they're gonna come through town.
Any other questions? Have we seen an increase in golf carts or anything like that since that was passed, or?
Not really, maybe a little bit more down in the area of the campground, but as far as on the streets, I haven't seen, to be honest with you, I haven't seen anything, really. The only place I've ever seen, the only place I've seen golf carts is on Park Road.
Okay.
And they have zero complaints on it, so I don't think it's a, has been an issue, so.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Thanks, Joel. Airport board report, Vicki.
Hey, the airport board met on Wednesday, July 12th, for its regular meeting, most of our discussion centered around the airport construction project. We are slightly ahead of schedule on that, we have had 24 of the 60 working days have been charged against the project as of today. All the pavement removal and electric removals have been completed, all the subgrade excavation, now they're doing the grading. I did try to include a few pictures for you in the packet, if you haven't had a chance to go out there. If you're interested in going out there, we just ask that when you get out there, don't walk out into the construction zone, you know, find Jason, he is our engineer on site. And he will be happy to show you around and answer any questions that you have. We also talked about some door and roof repairs on the hangers, we've got some leaking that's going on out there, so we're trying to find the end of that. And then, of course, we've got the ongoing issue with the rubber seals on the doors in the wintertime freezing down and ripping off, so. We do have an opportunity for a MinDOT state grant that would cover 70% of that, so we're putting together some estimates. If we decide to go for that, we'll bring that before the city council. We looked at, we'll have some proposed amendments to our land leases for the farmland that we rent out there. The land area acreage is reduced slightly because of our project, and so that'll be ongoing. And then also, in 2018, we're looking at paving the entrance road out there, and so that would be a separate grant application with the FAA, which could potentially pay for 90%, MinDOT Aeronautics paying for 5%, and the local share of 5%. So as long as we're, as long as MinDOT and the FAA are kicking in those high percentages, we're trying to take advantage of that and get as many improvements done as we can, so. Does anybody have any questions about the project or the airport?
Comments?
I just had one question. At the hospital, we recently had a call for a ambulance, or for a air ambulance to take off, and helicopters were not flying, so there was a question of the person going on a fixed wing ambulance. And is there like a statewide bulletin out that this, that we're not able to take?
Right, there is, there is a NOTAM, which is a notice to airmen, that says that the airport, the main runway, 1432, is closed for construction. But also the turf runway is open, it's at a reduced length, but it is open. So if they had a fixed wing that could land on that 1,900-foot length runway, then they could still land there, so.
I thought as much, but I just thought.
Yeah, they have, whenever we're on the runway for any purpose, any time of the year, we have to do a NOTAM, so that airmen always know if there's something happening on the, on the runway.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. We will now move on, we have a public hearing tonight, we'll recess the regular council meeting, and we will go into our public hearing. We have a public hearing before us this evening regarding the vacation of a public alley. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, if you wish to speak, please sign in on the sign-up sheet at the back of the room. The procedure is as follows. Presentation by staff, followed by questions of staff. Then we will go to public input, raise your hand, when recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and position, no one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. We will then hear questions for clarification, then public in favor, then public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless a majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session.
Okay, we have an application that's been received from Donnie Weniger, 106 Lincoln Street, for the vacation of an undeveloped alley. It runs along the south edge of the abandoned railway, which is now the Wobegon Trail. And also there's a little portion of First Street South that, if you can see on the plat that I gave you, the little triangle that crosses across what is Linden Street on the plat, and there's a little triangle that was unvacated in the past when First Street was, was vacated. So this is going to take both the alley and that little piece at the end of First Street, just to clarify that that is intended to be vacated because it caused some problems with some title work, and we're just doing this for clarification. You do have a copy of the plat, and all the remaining alleys in the plat, along with First Street adjacent to blocks one and two, was vacated previously. So if you see on the, on that little plat I gave you, it's got some numbers like 612 and 621, those are all ordinance numbers that vacated all the different portions of that plat. And then what is left and highlighted is what was never vacated, so we're just trying to take care of the rest of that. Notice was published in the Sock Herald, it was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet, no comments have been received. The city council just needs to conduct that public hearing to consider the vacation, if approved, the proper documentation will be recorded with Stearns County. If you have any questions for me or the applicant?
Questions? Okay. I guess then with that, with no questions, we will go to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak or have clarification, or speak in favor or against the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to have clarification, that would like to speak in favor or against the proposal? Calling a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to get clarification, or speak in favor or against the proposal? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council that has any last minute questions? Okay, our public hearing will now be closed, and we now go back into regular session of the council meeting. Seven A, action items, approve resolutions 2017-44, vacating public alley.
So this is the action that is necessary to vacate the alley and the fragment of First Street South, as it's plotted in the plat of Houghton Second Edition. If the council deems that the property is not used and will not be used by the city, it should approve the attached resolution to authorize the vacation. And on the vacation, we have described both the vacated city street of First Street and the alley in the subdivision of Houghton Second Edition.
Questions? Is there any reason to maintain an easement or anything along there?
No, and the reason is because that is the state trail, and they, they have their 50 feet, that they'll, they have plenty of room to do anything in there that they would need.
Okay. Any other?
We don't have any utilities in the area.
Our utilities are on the other side of the trail, the power line, the power line easement.
Any other questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-44, vacating city street and alley in the subdivision of Houghton Second Edition to Sock Center?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keith, second by Diane. Any other questions, comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven B, approve ice rental agreement with independent school district 743 and the Sock Center Hockey, Sock Center Youth Hockey Association.
Okay, the city's been working with the school and the hockey association to come to an agreement for ice rental at the arena. I did attach the proposed agreement for the high school, and then since the packet went out, we did have, we have the agreement with the hockey association. So I will detail out what those are and what the differences are between them. We've not had an agreement with the school in the past because the hockey association paid for the ice for the school. Now the school is participating, so now it's time to break those two separately and to get our individual agreements with them. So how, how the basic part of it is set up is that they're going to commit to purchase a certain number of hours, and if they commit to that many hours, they get a reduced rate for doing that. So and, and the school is committed to a five-year term, where they would buy 120 hours of ice. Years one and two at $90 an hour, year three and four at $100 an hour, and year five at 110. Now if they let us know, and Warren brought this up to me, some conflicting language that appeared to be conflicting in the agreement in the exhibit. And how it works is they'll get 120 hours they've committed to at a minimum. By November 15th, if they see that their numbers are great and they're gonna need more ice, if they let us know by November 15th, they can up that 120 hours to 150 or 160 and still get that reduced rate. After November 15th, then they have to pay at the, the city council's set rate of 130. Also any ice time earlier than like MEA weekend, or later than like the first of March, that's kind of the season, then it would be the extra rate because we have extra costs, because when the arena and the weather is warmer, it costs more money to keep the ice in there. So really it's just a block of hours, a set, set rate, and we both know going into it what that dollar amount is gonna be. So that's really the premise of, of it. The difference between the school and the youth hockey is the school is a five-year agreement. The hockey association at this point is only prepared to commit to a one-year. And they would do 440 hours at that same $90 an hour rate. So we have 120 hours from the school, 440 hours from the youth hockey association. The other parts with the hockey association's a little different is that they have the concession stand, they store things at the outdoor rink, they have the advertising contract, and that's, and then they can have their board meetings there. So really that's the only real differences between the two contracts. And what this does is it removes the previous $50,000 a year minimum from the hockey association. Because now that the school is paying their own rate, the hockey association's contract needs to be changed to reflect that. So that's really what we're trying to do here, to get the rules and responsibilities all in one contract, so there's no he said, she said, as the boards and the councils and staff all change. So Matt has been the one that has been working with the hockey association on this, and so he's a lot better versed in the contract than I am, so if you have any questions for him, and if I, if I miss something, you can certainly ask him at this time. Otherwise, we are looking to approve the five-year ice rental agreement with independent school district 743, and a one-year agreement with the Sock Center Melrose Youth Hockey Association.
Questions?
The hockey association, you said their contract says, how many hours, 400 and?
440.
440, and they have a provision for extra hours to be?
They have the same provision, if they let us know by November 15th that they need to up that, they can get it at the same rate.
All right.
Okay, the first part that Vicki talked about, that her and I had clarification on language, was in page 28 on exhibit A, paragraph six. That was confusing, so her and I went over that clarification, I, and that's what she was talking about.
And we will, we will, we'll reword that a little bit to be more clear, but that's the one that says if you want to up the number of hours, if you let us know by November 15th, you can still get the reduced rate, that's what that paragraph says, so.
It just needs to be some cleanup on that one, as far as the. Also, to Vicki, on number eight on exhibit A, I take it that the billing and everything for the hockey association would be based on those payment schedules, then?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
So are you, are you, do we have one contract for both entities, or two contracts?
We have two contracts completely separate from each other.
All right, so this contract that contains language about the hockey association?
It says youth hockey, that's been changed to the school, on number eight.
That would be in the other contract, then, all right.
Right, that is in the other, this one has already been changed to the school.
And they were paying us $50,000, the hockey association?
That included the school, yes.
That included, okay.
And the reason they got credit for that is because they were reimbursing the school for those hours. But now the school is, is paying those directly.
So the school's basically paying for what the high, for high school league time?
Yeah.
And everything else is being paid by the hockey association?
I was just doing the quick math to find out if we're still coming even on it, as compared to previous years, but that's the only reason I asked.
I think our free schedule states $130 an hour on ice time right now.
Yeah, the indication here.
Right, so. Any other questions, concerns, will I handle both items at the same time, if that's okay with the council?
It's fine.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the five-year ice rental agreement with independent school district 743, and the one-year rental agreement with the Sock Center Youth Hockey Association?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Heidi, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved pay request number one, WH Kate's project.
This is our first, our first pay request from Molitor for the WH Kate's project, as you see, the original contract amount was 152, 730, 385. We have had one change order, but the, and this is the first payment request of 72,730,06. Since this time, they have done the first lift of paving, so we'll probably have another bill at either the next council meeting or the one after that. And then the final lift will go on next year, so we'll have a couple more times that we'll see this, this bill from them, this is the first pay request. We are looking to approve this request for the WH Street and Utility Project for 72,730,06.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the pay request number one for WH Kate's Street Utility Project?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved pay request number two, Airport Project.
I was expecting that request by time of the meeting, and it did not arrive, so I should have had that removed when we did the agenda.
Seven E, approved pay request number three, Oak Street Project.
This is the Oak Street Project number three, this was the project that was originally 300,477,50. We have had some change orders that have upped that contract, we have paid 275, 144, 18 toward the project. This request is for 53, 394,13. And then, of course, we do have the rechainage, and I'm sure there'll be another final bill coming from them, so. To look for the pay request number three, to Markley Excavating for the Oak Street Project.
Questions, concerns? I know that, that intersection going east and west on Second Street's much better now, that that second left went in and they did some milling, I think, to file that down, so. Any other questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the pay request number three to Markley Excavating Incorporated for the Oak Street Project? Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-45, approving sale of excess property.
We've had a couple items that have been salvaged from the airport project by the public works department, that others express interest in, that we have no use for, those are a couple of windsocks. And so we have those avail, we had those available for sale on the Min bid. And then also we previously approved offering for sale our old pavement roller, which now has been sold as well. So you'll see those out here, we have the, the windsocks for 133,59 and 96,19, and the pavement roller went for 26,49, 43. So we have resolution 2017-45, accepting the bids and authorizing the sale of the excess equipment.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-45, declaring property as excess, approving sale?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2017-46, accepting donated property.
Of the Minnesota Department of Health, Office of Rural Health and Primary Care, on behalf of Leona M. and Harry Hemsley Charitable Trust, they provided the Sock Center Ambulance Service a Lucas II mechanical CPR device. I did include in your packet a picture of what they look like, so you'll know what that is. Staff members from Sock Center Ambulance Service were given in-depth training on using the device. And Quint Swedenberg, or Swedenberg, Jamie Cole and Kathy Struford, they went to Monticello, they received the training, and then they came back and trained the other EMTs. The Lucas is now in rig 561, it was gonna be here tonight for you to see, but 561 isn't here, so it's not gonna happen tonight. Jamie is here, though, to ask any questions of how it works and why it works better than mechan, or than the traditional way. But because the value of the donated equipment exceeds $5,000, the city council has to accept that donation, the same as you accept donations of cash. And then, so the attached resolution actually formally requests us, directs us to enter it into the capital inventory. So the resolution 2017-46 accepts the donation of capital equipment, and if you have any questions of Jamie, she'd be happy to answer how it works and, and why it's so successful.
Jamie, you wanna explain what that system is somewhat for the public on TV, and I think most of us ourselves know, but?
Great, thank you for having me tonight, and to just explain a little bit about this Lucas. It was received by the ambulance through a grant that was, I believe, five to seven statewide grant that serviced lots of rural ambulance services, and having access to a piece of machinery that improves survivability in sudden cardiac arrest when it's used in those first minutes of, you know, and it's much more. It's a more successful machine than, than manual compressions that we can do, because it can build up that interthoracic pressure within the chest cavity and sustain the depth, the correct depth and pressure on, on the patient's chest. Whereas normal fatigue will kick in within a few minutes with a person doing CPR. And we actually did get to use it for the first time last night as a crew, so.
Okay, questions? I think it's a great thing for each of our ambulances to have, so, thank you for explaining that. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-46, accepting donation of capital equipment? Yeah, motion by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Keith. Any other questions or comments? Ask the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven H, approved purchase of Lucas CPR units.
Okay, the Sock Center Ambulance, they were offered two additional Lucas units, devices for the other two ambulance rigs at a reduced cost, and some of that mon, funding comes from the same grant that provided the initial device. The department is recommending that the city authorize the purchase due to the amount of savings that can be utilized. The combination of the grant reduction for the purchase, along with other funds that have already been donated to the department, would, would cover the costs of the equipment. So the total cost of the two units is actually 34,066, the discount from the grant is 12,357, so the final price would be 21,7. So it's a, the, the two units are 10,854 each, and so this is, this is quite a savings from the $17,000 they normally would have been. So the, the department is recommending that we approve the purchase of the two Lucas chest compression systems for 21,708.
Questions?
One question, are these the exact same as the other two?
Yes.
And so the batteries, I, I'm assuming they're battery powered, they're interchangeable, but doing all four?
They're, yeah, all, all the pieces are interchangeable, it's a brand new Lucas III device, it's the third system that the Lucas company has put out. What the company has put out for the Lucas, and they're, yeah, they're all, they're all.
So there wouldn't be any chance of mixing up?
No.
Okay.
And as a, that's a device is specific to our. And as a, um, medical device is specific to our service. And it's not something like, say, a helicopter crew comes in to pick up a patient we brought in. They have to change, put their device on, um, the patient, so our device is not gonna be.
Leaving with.
It's not gonna be our service.
Thank you.
The one thing that I got for comment is, is in the purchase of these two here, each rig is gonna have one. Cause I can see it, like Jamie and I talked before the meeting. You have one rig go on a transfer and that's the one that has the Lucas in it, and we get another call. Then we've got the other rig sitting there without that capability of being up to date, so.
That would be the call to my place.
We hope not. We hope not. Is there any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of two Lucas three-point-oh chest compression systems for twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and forty cents?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved Resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-seven, requesting speed study, County Road seventeen Sinclair Lewis Avenue.
The city received a petition and you have a copy of it in your packet, the owner's honor near Sinclair Lewis Avenue, uh, going like from Holy Family School to the east. And, uh, what they're requesting is that the speed limit sign where when you're heading, when you're heading out of town, it turns fifty miles an hour, two-hundred-and-fifty feet past East Street, and then likewise coming back into town. Um, so they would like to have that pushed further out of town. Because it's a county road, um, it's not our jurisdiction, we can formally request that the county, in turn, request from the state a speed study, cause as you know, speed studies have to be conducted before speed limits can be changed. Uh, we did this request in two thousand nine as well. Um, they do, uh, the MINDOT would do a lot of different factors, and the reason that we kind of failed last time was there's not enough access points, but now there may be more traffic to, to make up for that difference. So it's possible that a new speed study would have a different result. Um, they also look at, um, how much, how many cars are going through, how fast they're currently going. And I did include the, in your packet, the brochure of how a speed study is done. Um, they do say that when they come out and they look and they see what the, eighty-five percent of the drivers, whatever speed they're going, that's probably what the speed limit's going to be. So if eighty-five percent of the drivers are going fifty, it's probably gonna stay fifty. If eighty-five percent of the drivers are going forty, it could go down to forty. So that's kind of what, how the speed study works. Um, I did put in your packet a resolution requesting that a speed study be requested. I've also told the owners that, of, of, I've provided them with this brochure so they can understand a little more about it. But how it is right now is, like I said, two-hundred-and-fifty feet from East Street, it's already fifty miles per hour. Um, they talk about a crosswalk, but there is no crosswalk at East Street. The first crosswalk is actually on Ash Street. On East Street, there's a sidewalk on Sinclair and East, but then when you get on the other side of, of Sinclair, there's no ped ramp or anything to get down onto the street, so the first crossing is actually Ash. We had talked one time to the county about a crosswalk in that area, and they thought it was too close to the fifty mile an hour to bring a crosswalk into the mix. So perhaps if they may move the speed out further, we could have a crosswalk there. I can't say for sure how they'll react, but the first step is for us to request that the county have a speed study conducted, and then we'll go from there. And that's, uh, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-seven.
Questions?
I have just one question you had mentioned, um, after the speed study, if they notice that the, there's only a forty mile an hour, um, average speed, it could be lowered to forty miles?
It could be. And that's within, that's the risk of a speed study. Sometimes people, I, I was in a community where it was thirty-five and everybody wanted it lowered to thirty, and they had a speed study and it raised to forty-five, so.
So I was gonna say, then we could do sixty, and it wouldn't raise to sixty.
Well, it, it can be raised, but it's not likely, but it could be. But our situation here is, it's fifty, then it's thirty, and then you're in the traffic. It's so fast. And so their request is just to push it out further.
That also figures into if you're speeding too, they can take the average speed.
Right.
Into account as well.
They will.
Give you a ticket too.
But it may not.
Any other questions? Um, one concern, is there any cost, if we request this speed study, is there any cost to the city?
No.
Okay, because I know that over the years, I think this is about the third time in the last twenty years that I know that this speed study has been done and it's always come back with the same results. So I was just making sure we're not doing something to cost the city more money and.
No.
Do the same thing, so. Any other questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-seven, requesting a speed study to be conducted?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved Resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-eight, approving lot split.
A request has been received from Gerald Sherman for a minor subdivision of a parcel for recombination with an adjacent parcel. So the parcel is part, is lot eighteen of the auditor subdivision. It's on the east side of Ferry Lake Road, north of the Wobegon Trail, and it's five point six-three acres. He's proposing to split one point four-three acres off the top of it and add it to the parcel to the north. So we're not creating a new lot, we're just moving a lot line is really what we're doing here. It is owned to R one, meets all zoning criteria. The intent of the split is to allow the construction of a new home. Uh, there is a certificate of survey has been provided and all property pins have been located or set. And I did include for, in your packet, an aerial view of the lot that is to be split, and then also the certificate of survey to show where the new line is going to be. And, uh, and also the resolution approving the minor subdivision, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-eight.
Questions? Does everybody know where this is located? So you're hearing nothing? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-eight, approving the minor subdivision?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other last minute concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven K, consider request for repeal of ordinance regarding the two A M on-sale liquor.
Uh, following the recent adoption of ordinance seven seven four, allowing for on-sale liquor establishments to remain open until, until two A M, the city received a petition by a number of license holders requesting that we consider repealing the ordinance. And they have, there's ten license holders that have the on-sale in the city. Of those, seven signed petition to repeal. One was unavailable, one chose to remain neutral, and then the, the tenth one is the original person that brought it, brought it to the, to the mayor, I guess, for requesting that we allow the two A M. Uh, the common concern of the owners that I've spoken to is incidental issues that occur with the additional hour of drinking in addition to personnel costs, getting home later, all those kinds of things that factor into it. Um, they understand they're not being forced to remain open until two A M, however, as a business owner, they kind of feel they don't have a choice. And I think we kind of talked about this a little bit at the last meeting when we were doing it. So we did, I did include in your packet the pick, the, the petition that we received, a couple of the owners are here this evening. And the request is to repeal ordinance seven seven four, amending the city code which allowed two A M liquor sale.
Comments?
I just had one question. I, I, and I voted against the ordinance the last time, but I'm just wondering, is this any different than Sunday opening? I mean.
I don't think so, except maybe that there's a fee attached to it. I mean, I.
Yeah, because I know right now some bars, and that's probably the bar owners could answer more. Some bars aren't open Sunday and some are. Is, is not some being open two o'clock or till two A M and others not? Is that gonna be about the same difference or?
Well, the, the Sunday ones, not all of them are eligible to stay open on Sunday. So that's a little bit different because you have to have the full food license in order to be open on Sunday. So some might not have a choice, they can't be open. But the ones that have the on-sale full food license can choose to be open or not.
It's also my understanding that Melrose has, has an ordinance allowing two A M, and they have only one bar that's actually staying open.
That is correct.
And the rest of them are closing.
That's my understanding.
And, and I think we researched Alexandria, who's three times our size, and now they've got that ordinance and only two of them.
Yeah.
Out of all of them, establishments in Alexandria are actually staying open that we know of until two. Um, so it isn't like we are setting a precedent, you know, for. The one thing is, is, you know, I, I don't think there's a week gone by that someone on the council, they're in city hall, isn't asked what, what's city government doing to attract businesses and what are they doing to promote helping the businesses that are already here? And when we had the request to have the option of staying open until two, I think in good faith, the council pretty much went and said, let's give them the option to do it, to help you with your business in town. And, um, I hate to say, and you know, there's people probably aren't gonna like what I say, but it's a pure fact, it's kind of like, I hope Joe Blow down the street doesn't make a dollar before I do by, because now that it isn't the same playing field. To me, it's a business decision. And we're giving the businesses in town an opportunity to do, run their business the way they need to.
You know, I, I felt like after the last decision, or even before during our conversation, that we didn't have enough input. But this, this isn't obvious from the business owners that they don't want it. And I feel like before we even discussed it last time, we didn't get enough feedback, and I thought the word was out there. I thought that they would've been, you know, reaching out and saying, no, 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 if they truly didn't want it. But if you've got the majority of the bar owners who are able to stay open until two A M asking us to rescind, I say, they're telling us they don't wanna be open, even though we're allowing them as government saying, we're not gonna put our thumbs on you and tell you how, how long you need to be open for public safety, for, you know, the bar owners, for the bartenders. They're asking us not to, and I feel like that's, that should take precedence over us managing their hours.
I, I agree with Heidi too on that, absolutely.
And I, I can understand that statement. The only thing is, is there's a lot of new owners of establishments. And some of them are on this petition. But what are we telling the businesses that wanna try the option? Are we not even giving them a chance by repealing it right away because the rest of them don't want it? You know, if we came along and all of a sudden said everybody's gonna be closed at midnight, you know, it's, it's the same thing. We encourage business, we're asked about what we're gonna do for business and everything else, and we finally lay the option out. But now since the majority doesn't like it, we're telling the ones that are taking over the new business, yep, too bad, so sad. Sock Center's going back the way they used to do things.
And I, I agree with that sentiment, because if you take all the input from the existing business owners in any business in the city, are you going to poll them and ask if we can have a new gas station? The existing gas stations are all gonna say no. So it's, it's, you know, yeah, a number of bars don't wanna stay open till two, okay. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean they can prevent anybody else from being open later.
I, I just feel the overwhelming response after this decision was made has been, this is not a good idea. And if that's what the public feels, I mean, we're here.
Well, are, are you hearing it from the public? What I hear is, what difference does it make?
I'm hearing a lot of, this is not good.
Okay.
I'm hearing a lot of not good from, from not only business owners, but, you know, our, um, the public safety aspect of it. Like, who needs to be out that late, truly? And then you've got the people behind the scenes who are working, cops, bartenders, bar owners and otherwise. It's, it's been.
The only thing is, is an option.
It is an option.
It's an option.
It is.
You know, and we've got other communities that are doing it. And not everybody's part of it, and I don't see any of them closing doors because of it. Yeah, well, the statement was made, nothing good ever happens after midnight. Well, then let's make everybody close at eleven. Because if that's the case, then let's make it easier on the police department and close at such and such a time, and we don't care if it's Friday, Saturday, or Sunday.
And I, honestly, I was torn over the last vote too, because I felt, I, that's why I wanted the amended motion, was to give it a try. Not that we're forcing this long-term, not that we don't ever get to review it ever again, but.
But are we actually giving it a try now if we repeal it tonight? We're not. We're basically telling anyone that's new to a business, the majority don't want you to do things the new way or try something different, so we're not gonna do it. To me, that's not what this council is here for.
Well, and we did this a couple weeks ago. Nobody's applied, to my understanding.
Nobody's applied yet, I think, is waiting to see what happened here. I think, I think part of the concern, and Heidi kind of hit on it right there, was when this came to the city, we kind of, I guess, maybe, maybe the assumption this was kind of a collective request of the bar owners, and it really wasn't a collective request of the bar owners, and some of them felt like, hey, you know, we didn't, you didn't even ask our opinion. It wasn't a public hearing, it wasn't required to be a public hearing. And, and so maybe we made some assumptions that there was a, it was a collective request when it wasn't, and so then the owners came back and said, well, wait a minute, you know, it affects all of us, we should all look at this together. And I think that's a lot of what precipitated the petition, was, was the fact that they were unaware that it was happening. So that was kind of where Heidi was coming from, and probably a lot of what precipitated the petition even.
I guess I would, uh, warn this council that you will probably never get another chance to rescind this.
Well, well, we will.
We will.
Because it's only good for a year.
Yeah.
It's got a sunset clause anyway.
In a year, we would review it.
If it doesn't get renewed in a year, it'll be done.
And if we didn't have any issues with public safety or anything like that, we could rescind it.
Okay.
You know, but we're obviously without giving it a try, you know? It, it really, I think it reflects badly on the council to try to promote businesses, and then two weeks after a decision, turn around and rescind it without even giving it a chance. Back to what I said before, you know, back to sock center the way it was. We're going through the comprehensive plan, and all the existing comprehensive plan, had it stated in there that absolutely no one would be allowed in sock center to do business that would compete with an existing business. What kind of statement is that? That says sock center is not open to anybody with new ideas or new business. And we're trying to change that as far as I'm concerned as being mayor.
I, I appreciate that, and I understand that, and I'm not trying to be contentious about this subject, but we have six bars on one block. If we're, I mean, being, being an open, you know, city welcoming businesses, how many more bars do we want if it's a two A M? I mean, is that the focus by changing it to two A M?
No, cause it's a business decision. And if any of the bars in this town right now think that, that they already aren't having business leave to go to other towns, then they're really not looking at their business themselves, because it is happening. They are leaving early.
And this is a trend in all over the place, really.
And, and I.
Later bar openings to bars just open all night.
And I, I, I know where they're coming from, I see both sides of the story. But the pure fact is, is we put it on a one-year trial period, and to turn around and change our mind and, and say no to the ones that requested it and not giving them a chance, does not show a good light on this council. So, is there any other comments or questions?
The only thing I, I can say is I, I really feel that before we made this decision, we should've run it through committee first to study it. Talked to the bar owners and that, but.
Well, it did go through committee, and we weren't required to go, have a public hearing or notify because we're not required to do that. You know, it's like Dave said, if another gas station wants to come to town, are we gonna notify all of them and ask them if it's okay with them? No. You know, we. You know, we work with what we get, so.
So, yeah, that's, my feeling is, we, we passed this, we passed it with a one-year time limit on it anyway. And I hate to see us not even try it. I mean, we, we agreed to try it for a year.
Okay.
I have a hard time saying, well, two weeks later, we changed our mind, we're not gonna try it for a year after all.
Do we need a motion to consider? The action request is, consider the repeal of Ordinance 774, amending the city code to allow 2:00 AM liquor sales.
So if there was a, if there was an action, the action would be a motion to repeal, or rescind.
Okay, so-
If there's no action, it just moves forward. It stays the way it was.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we rescind it.
In accordance with Robert's rules, people who are on the losing end of a motion, or of a, of an action item, aren't allowed to reopen it. It has to be reopened by somebody who voted for it. Otherwise, it'd be tied up forever.
Right.
We are following Robert's rules.
Right. So it would basically be between Heidi, Dave, and I to decide whether or not-
Out of respect for the business owners, I will make the motion to rescind.
Okay, we have a motion by Heidi. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Diane. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion fails. Two to three. Three against, two in favor. No abstentions. So, as of right now, the ordinance stands, and we will relook at that in a year.
Or nine months.
Or nine months, and, yeah, before it gets to that point, so. 7L, approve Big Socks Lakes, Big Sock Lake Association budget request for aquatic weed control for 2018.
The, the weed control survey has been concluded at the direction of Big Sock Lake Association, and you have been provided with that report. They, the, and also the budget plan from the Big Sock Lake Association. And as you know, the city and the Big Sock Lake go together on this and request that the watershed include that in the budget. So what, what they are saying is, the results and recommendation contained in the recent RMB aquatic vegetation survey indicates that approximately 15 acres of high-density invasive curly leaf pond weed growth occurs in the north end of the North Bay of Sock Lake. In addition, an area on the North Bay near the Narrows appears to have an abundance of CLP. The size of this higher-density area is estimated to be 10 acres. Based on the report data, a budget recommendation has been prepared for control of this invasive species during 2018. They have the CLP treatment of $8,250, sales tax of $340.31, and then a weed study to, for 2008, for 2019 spraying of $37.50. So the total requested budget for 2018 is $12,348. And so the request before the city council is to approve the 2018 work plan and budget for the aquatic weed control.
This is the same thing we go through every year, base, so they can, so a watershed can put it into their budget. As we know, this year, so much was allocated, but then the DNR said no to any spraying in Sock Lake, so that is, didn't happen this year. So this is the, the next step for next year. Do I have a motion to approve 2018 work plan and budget for aquatic weed control?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, Red Schoolhouse relocation plans.
Just wanted to reintroduce that, that, that's an item that's still out there. We had, we have the relocation of the Red Schoolhouse. We had several ideas of where it could be. The four remaining ones are the Sinclair Lewis Park, west of the playground, east of the boat access, the Sinclair Lewis Park at the intersection of Park Road and the Banshell Parking Lot, the JC Park southwest corner, which is the intersection of Main Street North and Third, basically the, outside the outfield of JC Park. And then the fairgrounds remains in there. Not sure now anymore if the fairgrounds is still interested in, or where we are with that. But just wanted to have some continued dialogue, maybe look at those locations, get some ideas of how you think that might look in, in, in those areas, and then we'll have more serious conversation about it, and what we're gonna do.
The one thing about that is, we're gonna be bumping up against the timeline here pretty quick.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to make that decision, because next spring, a lot of dirt's gonna get moved out there on that south end of town, and that's, the schoolhouse is gonna have to be moved, so. 8B, impound lot security.
We've previously discussed impound lot security for the police impound vehicles, and we just have some concerns and some things going on that we think we need to revisit that idea. And maybe this is something the operations committee can look in in more detail, of maybe a correct location, and, and what we have available that we could use right now, and, go from there. So I just, I guess I'd just like to send that to operations committee, so they can look at it a little more closely.
General consensus, that would make sense?
Yeah, definitely.
New business, small cities grant dollars.
Many of you know that in 2005 and '06, the city of Sock Center was recipient of a $1.185 million grant, Small City Dollars Development Grant, which we awarded to residences and businesses. There were some to residence, some was rental rehab, and some was commercial rehab. And it was in the form of grants and forgivable loans for improvements, such as windows, insulation, furnaces, siding, that type of thing. And Stearns County HRA administered that grant on behalf of the city. So they're the ones that went out and did the site assessments, and hired the contractors, and, and collected, or just divvied out the money, I should say. And so now, as of Monday, that's all been turned back to the city. The remade, the reporting requirements that go along with it, cash that came back to the city from people that have paid back loans, or sold their house and had to pay back the loan. And also, we have the receivable balance of, everybody that got a 0% loan is a 0% loan as long as they own that property. And once that property is sold for any reason, that money then also comes back. So this becomes kind of a revolving thing for the city. So the cash that came back to the city was $107,000, this is money that came back to the fund. And then also, there's $277,000 that's receivable as these properties sell over time. So we have, the $277,000 could come in tomorrow, or it could come in 40 years, it just depends on when each of these parcels sell. But the grant portion is satisfied. So because we have the money back, we have some decisions to make. Number one, do we use that $107,000 as our match and apply for another grant, and, and focus on another area of the city where maybe we can help our residents? Do we want to use it and just reloan it out, and just keep the revolving going? You know, how do we leverage that? And the EDA was kind of the parent of this, and so I'm going to be taking this to the EDA. I just wanted you to know that those funds have come back to the city, and it's just gonna give us another tool. If we want to apply for another grant, it's November. So we'll be looking at that pretty closely, to see if, it's a pre-application, if we want to consider that. So it's kind of where we're at with the small city grant dollars. And I know we've talked about it over the years, it's eventually gonna come back, while the time finally came, so.
Any questions about that? Okay. 9B, set budget workshop meeting date.
It's that time of the year to set the budget workshop. Usually we do it toward the end of August sometime. Depending on everybody's, I'm hoping you kind of looked at your calendars when we said that. I picked, I picked August 23rd, but Warren vetoed it right away. So then, you know, sometime that week would be good. Would give us time then to go back and, and put the budget together after the council's recommendations in the workshop, to get it back to the city council in September. So I don't know if you want to pick a date right now, you know, or if you can look at your calendars, or I can circulate an email and we can select a date, but that's kind of about the time we're hinting at, is maybe get it done then.
Yeah, the third week of August is when we'd like to do it, but that Wednesday is already out on my calendar, so. If you, everybody wants to get ahold of Vicky and let her know.
Just send us some dates, and we'll get back.
Yeah, I'll just send you some days.
Sure.
We'll make it work.
He can hardly wait, yeah.
Can hardly wait.
Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $145,334.10. Paid claims of $560, for a total of $145,894.10. And we have June checks totaling $364,227.53. With Sock Center Youth Hockey Association submitted an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license for a concert at the Sock Center Civic Arena on September 16, 2017. The fee and the certificate of insurance has been provided. And Pam Boardman, representing the Grillin' and Chillin' event on September 9, 2017, has requested approval of a road closure for Park Road. Any questions on the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So.
Motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion, one abstention? Motion carries four in favor, none against, one abstention. Takes us to our informational items. Vicky?
I just have two informational items. We did get the state demographer estimate of our population. It's a 2016 estimate of 4,457 people. And so that's up a little bit, which is good. And I'm, I'm thinking when the apartment complex goes in, we'll see another adjustment to those numbers. The other informational items, just FYI, we had a little rubber membrane on the police roof giveout, and so we had some flooding there. And so that rubber roof, we're, we're looking at a repair between $4,000 and $5,000 that's gonna occur very shortly here, and I just wanted you to be aware of that. So, other than that, I have nothing else.
Any questions about the informational items? If you want to see some of the damage in the police department, all you need to do is go down there, they definitely will show you, so.
So 4457, is that, when's the next census?
The census is on the, on the, every 10 years, but the state demographer, yeah. The state demographer estimates every year, they update an estimate.
Okay. And once we hit that 5,000 mark, then we will get help with-
Then we will be state aid city.
Yes.
To note that, the legislature did appropriate some state aid money for small cities, so we'll be receiving about $33,000 in state aid this year.
So, all you-
So, little added bonus.
People know what you should be doing.
And not leave me town.
Yeah. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.